And I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett. Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Excellent, okay. If you'll all follow me in the Pledge of Legions. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Time for public communications, the time set aside for members of the public to address us on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. And matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken. So if you're speaking, we're listening, but we're not going to do anything right at the time. Anyone here who wishes to speak on public communications? Sherry, anyone in the waiting room? No raising hands, okay. Well, we'll move on then to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of July 20th. Any commissioners with refinements to those minutes?
I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Motion?
Nothing heard. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll on item one.
Chair.
Yes.
Quilisi, excuse me. Chair, that's fine. Vice Chair Bennett.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Trent.
He's abstained.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I have visited, I have eaten at both of the establishments.
Microphone.
I have visited both of the establishments, but I have not spoken with their owners.
Okay. I have, I have walked around both establishments and I have spoken with the owner of Bonnie Lou's because she was curious what conditions would result if this were approved. And so I explained procedures to her and I had a conversation with Lucas offline to say, is this really what the conditions would be? And he said yes, and so that's what I passed on. But I have not expressed any opinions on either case. Sir?
I walked around each of the restaurants.
Yeah, it's on.
Pull it up.
And, but did not speak with anyone at either place.
Familiar with both sites, visited both sites, no ex parte contacts.
Thank you.
I have eaten at Bonnie Lou's many a time, but I have not eaten on their outdoor facility. But I did visit and look at it and I visited the other side, but I haven't talked to anybody about this.
Very good. Thank you. Then we'll move on to our public hearing items, number two. Staff, would you tell us about this, please?
Yes, this is a design review permit and conditional use permit request for permanent outdoor dining at, I want to get the exact address, 328 East Ojai Avenue with Bonnie Lou's. This is a city public property that's located behind the existing restaurant and on the opposite side of Ojai Avenue in a courtyard area. This area was previously approved for temporary outdoor dining during the COVID indoor dining restrictions. And it is an area of approximately 900 square feet. It's actually a little bit smaller than that, between, but over 800. And the applicant is proposing to accommodate six tables and four, with four chairs each totaling 24 patrons. Staff has reached out to businesses, business owners, including this applicant at Bonnie Lou's, encouraging them to apply for the permanent outdoor dining after the COVID restrictions were lifted. And this is one of four applicants that's coming before the commission. The proposed tables and chairs would be black, powder coated steel mesh. And it's a pretty simple application, however, included with the conditions of approval are specifically that these outdoor tables and chairs would be put away during off hours. An annual renewal fee would be placed upon them through the conditions of approval. And also, the use of plastic tableware would be discontinued if this permit were to be approved. And also, I had a call from one of the commissioners asking about other dining establishments with outdoor dining permits in the city. So these would be outdoor dining, meaning not on, meaning on public property, not private property. And we have four. One is Sage at 217 East Matilah, and that's from an approval in 2018. The Duchess, which was a zoo and at 457 East Ojai, that's 2004. The Vine at 308 East Ojai, that was also '04. And Asteria or Austeria Monte Grappa at 242 East Ojai, and that was in 1999. So with that, staff's recommending approval with the attached conditions of approval that you have in your packet.
Question?
You just stated off hours, but the proposal we have is nightly. So that seems to me, to me different because they close at two or three o'clock and nightly could be...
When the restaurant closes, they're required to take their furniture and put it away.
Okay, so that's not what your resolution says.
Have to correct that. Thank you.
So that's what you intended? Okay, I just want to be sure about that. Because the resolution says on page 46, all furniture shall be removed from the courtyard nightly. So if you want that to be removed when their hours close, I think we need to change that.
You can adjust it.
Okay, I'm just asking the question. I don't have a position on it at this point.
Which condition of approval is that?
It's condition six.
Thank you. Got it, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does, does the applicant intend to move indoors in the case of rain or cold weather?
I think, well, I should let the applicant speak for themselves. However, if people don't want to sit outside.
No one here.
Then they, well, we should have somebody online.
Oh, okay.
I think Troy Becker is the representative for the applicant and they should be available this evening and...
Because they don't, at the, at the moment, if they're operating outdoors, you can't sit inside. You have to walk through the restaurant to the outside and sit down and your food is brought to you.
They're closing the inside while the outdoors open?
No, they, they used the outside when the inside was closed.
Oh, I thought it, but it's like their news would use it now when it gets full and people could go up there.
Not when it's full.
I think, I think that's the intent now is to increase the seating.
We should hear from the applicant, I guess, on that one.
Well, hold on. You're talking about when COVID was in full force and the indoor restaurant aspects were closed.
Yeah.
Or, or they had significant restrictions placed on them, literally two people inside. That's where this temporary use permit came into play, allowing for this outdoor dining, which was meant to be at least a portion in some cases. I mean, once again, I talked about this two weeks ago, but it's like 16 businesses that ended up entering into this no fee temporary permit. This is one of four, actually one of three. I know Mara had spoken about four. And it ended up being that we've only got three. One ended up dropping out about a month ago.
So going forward without COVID, they can use both the inside and the outside at the same time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But they have not been doing that. That was the reason.
They have not been doing that, right.
Yeah, so I'd have the applicant speak to how that is being addressed, but they have full rights to both at the same time.
Okay.
And are we talking about charging them a fee or rent?
Sorry. I'm a little controlling. There's an initial fee for dining in the public right of way of $325, I believe. And then every year after that, there's an annual fee of $85. And that's payable to the Public Works Department. It's their, it's their fee, it's their permit.
Can I ask another question? This comes to my mind. There are other restaurants that have spaces in the courtyard?
Yes.
But they're all blocked off?
Yes.
Is that their property or are they on the public right of way as well?
So there are a couple of restaurants there that have an enclosure that you're talking about and it's within the city's right of way.
So you've allowed them to do that, okay.
Through a conditional use permit.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be sure.
And an encroachment permit, yes. Which is the, the fee I just talked about through the city or through the Public Works Department.
And do they pay a similar amount?
I don't know what the fee was in 1999 or '04 for that matter. So it, but today, they would be paying the same amount.
They, they are paying the same amount, I mean.
Those fees have, those fees have adjusted by city council resolution over the years.
I see. So that's up to the city council to decide what they're going to do.
But at this point then, any, any restaurant that wishes to use public property is going to pay the initial fee and then an annual fee for using public property? So coffee roasters and, and other places like that, they're all paying an annual fee right now?
To be in the public right of way, yes. And of course, after receiving a conditional use permit from this body.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Are there any limits on timeframes with the CUP?
For the outdoor dining?
Mm-hmm.
There are not through the conditions of approval that we've created, but the commission can, can do as they, as they wish. You know, if they wanted to place a condition of, of a time limit. Generally speaking, it would be the hours of the restaurant.
It, it sounds to me like the neighboring businesses are fine with this particular and the letters that we've gotten. But that's today. And if that changes and if someone comes up with a real problem, do you have a way to bring them back to, for review?
It's a conditional use permit and if there were issues, then we would be back before you if we, if it couldn't be settled between the establishment and the neighborhood and then it came to us. And if we had to come back to the planning commission to review the conditional use permit, absolutely.
I can't remember where it is, but I do recall reading a, some kind of provision in this, this approval that a lot gave them the permission if they violated or caused problems that they could come back. But I don't know where it is at the moment, but anyway.
I could jump in here also. I think it's condition 11 notes that the, it's a, there's, there's the conditional use permit, but the encroachment permit issued by Public Works is an annual permit.
But do they? What do they take into account when Public Works reviews it?
Right. So...
What, what are they looking at? I mean, do they just collect their $85 or do they ask?
No, I, I think they, they, you know, if they're, their neighborhood complaints, if they're code enforcement complaints, those would go to Public Works. If there's issues about runoff or waste or other things being left in the public right of way after the business closes or at the night, those are things that would, you know, concern Public Works. Right, exactly, nuisances and other things of the sort.
Okay.
So on conditions nine and 10, there are specific things like lighting and noise and no amplification. And I'm not sure about eight, smoking. Is smoking allowed? Because I didn't read that code provision, but I assume it was, doesn't allow it, okay, okay.
All smoking has to comply with the code which says no smoking.
That's what I assumed it did, but I didn't have time to look it up, so anyway.
But if the code ever changes, then that condition is still good.
Okay, and then look at number seven, the last sentence. Any behavior that disturbs the general public or passerby or allows refuse or debris on the, I can't even pronounce that, sidewalk may be subject to suspension or revocation of their outdoor dining permit approval. So that gives them wide berth to regulate that.
Clamp down. If there are complaints about the conditional use permit, then we'll be back before the planning commission.
I did have, well, I, I suggested a couple of typos in here, but, but in addition, excuse me, do these same regulations, that is, a need for an encroachment permit and an annual fee as a result, apply to any business other than a restaurant? Because around this particular patio area, we have, we have non-restaurant businesses, one of which at least uses the patio for, for display as, as businesses do along, along Ojai Avenue. Roll racks of clothing out onto the sidewalk.
Those, those wouldn't actually be charged a fee because we have specific standards that, that regulate how much area. It's pretty limited in terms of what they can use. And if they go over that, then we have co-compliance go out and have a conversation. I would say this though, the Sunday's Farmers Market is on public property and that pays an annual, they pay an annual fee.
Okay.
Which is across.
They're encroaching on the parking lot.
Correct.
That's right. It pays a big fee for losing our parking lot.
They pay an annual fee for that.
But, but places like the Coffee Roaster?
No.
They, they, that's not, that's not a restaurant.
Nope.
That's just coffee, so...
They have, they have certain parameters that they've got to stay within, so I think it's something like...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very limited scope in terms of how they can, and that one is within the compliance.
Okay.
I, I have a question and it really goes to my earlier question about whether or not Bonnie Lou's was open or not and whether it was just a pass through. Because at least the last few times that I've gone there, you could not stop there. You could walk in, make your order and walk out the back door and they would come and find you and serve you the food that you had ordered. And if they intended to continue to do that, they'd be in violation of, on page 404, the second paragraph, which starts out section 10 dash 3.1708, which is that all dining areas shall be adjacent to and incidental to the operation of a food service establishment.
Right.
Providing on-premise customer seating. And if there is no on-premise Bonnie Lou's and it's only on, in the, in the courtyard, it isn't then incidental to the operation of that. And it may sound like a nitpick, but... Yeah, it becomes primary.
I can't imagine they intend to keep doing that. That was just an emergency COVID thing.
If, if COVID or something else comes back.
I've eaten there at least, at least eight or 10 times in the back courtyard and the, and the restaurant itself was not open.
How long ago was that?
No, recently. Within the last, within the last 60 or 90 years.
Let's just hear it from them.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions of clarification for staff? I, I wanted to, I will ask questions about the wording of the resolution afterwards. Any other questions to clarify things with staff?
Yeah, one, one quick question on four of the conditions. So the design review permit expires after a year, correct?
If not, if not in use.
If not in use.
If not been used for a year.
Got it, okay. So the same applies to the conditional use permit, but that's a six-month window. So if they're not using it, they only get six months, okay. And if it's approved, if they're using it, then it continues. They don't have to come back after a year.
No, it's not an annual.
It's not an annual, like you've seen with other discretionary views that we've got coming back to this body. That's not, that's not the case with this.
This is, this is like a building permit. If you don't start building within six months, then you lose the building permit kind of thing.
And then I guess the question around what's the primary operation? Is the primary operation inside or outside? I guess we'll figure that out here soon. Cool.
Worry about that later if COVID comes back strongly, I guess.
It's back.
And we may have to do some more adjusting.
As another emergency.
Okay, then let's, let's move on and hear from the applicant. Sherry, do we have an applicant available? Okay. We'll have public comment after the applicant.
I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sherry, can you hear me?
Hello, who's speaking?
Troy.
This is Troy Becker.
Okay, very good, sir. Please go ahead.
So my name is Troy Becker. I am helping Jenny process this application. I am a former almost 12-year planning commission member. I hate to say it, I think I only recognized one of you, but appreciate your work there and want to also say that I've been beyond impressed with the work over the past few years that staff has done. And additionally with Jenny on this project, they have been extremely helpful and tried to make this process as easy as possible. And I, I think that they don't get recognized enough and I just want to say they've done a bang-up job and I appreciate it. So the reason that we're doing this is not to have full-time, a full-time restaurant service outside. There will be no food pass-through, there'll be no paper plates, there won't be any of that, those things that we had to deal with during COVID. That's not the objective of this at all. Jenny does not have the restaurant and kitchen capacity to have indoor and outdoor dining at the same time. This is for Jenny to have a backstop because as you know, with COVID and with other things that can come up in the future, we need to be able to move fast. And the only way we're going to do that is to have a backstop and have the availability to have outdoor dining. And we are somewhat reluctantly doing this because this is costing a fortune. I have invested north of $3,000 of my own money out. That bill will continue to go up if we have to do more work, which I'm assuming we won't have to do. But it's certainly not enjoyable when Bonnie Lou's and some of these other restaurants are the heartbeat of this town. And this is my own opinion, but these restaurants are shutting down because they just don't have the money to make it. And that same thing is, is occurring with Bonnie Lou's and some of the other restaurants in town. In my opinion, we should be where it makes sense. We should be encouraging these restaurants to have outdoor dining because not only does it spread the crowds out that come here on the weekends, but it provides tax money to this community and it provides interaction with the community. It's a service for the city. And by that, I mean that Jenny and her staff have to clean that back patio during COVID every single day. There has been, never been any security provided by the city. There's not been the, anyone cleaning up that patio. And I'm not talking from patrons, I'm talking about from other things that I really don't want to mention here. And Jenny has worked very hard over the years. I believe she's been in business over 20-some years. And this has been a very difficult decision for her. And as her, by the way, I provide accounting services and business consulting services for Jenny for, I don't know, I think about seven years. And this has been a difficult decision because, you know, it's a backstop for her. We may have some overflow. You know, there are people right now that have been longtime customers, locals, that will not eat inside an eatery in Ojai. And they have requested tables outside and yet we are not allowed to do that. I was part of the outdoor display ordinance. I actually helped write that among other ordinances. And at that time, the planning commission was trying to get people to interact. In fact, at the time, Sue Horgan and Joe DeVito asked me directly, Troy, what can we do to get people to get inside that courtyard? It was a big problem and it still is a big problem. And you all, if you've been in that courtyard, I hope as planning commissioners, you spent some time back there. It is very hard to get people back there. But when we had COVID, the upside of that courtyard was that was a nice, busy place and it was so enjoyable. It was amazing. And I've actually encouraged Jenny to have outdoor dining, but she simply doesn't have the capacity. So all we're asking for is to be able to have tables out there in case we need them. And I think there's a high likelihood that that's going to happen. We may have one or two locals we might set a table out for. Although Jenny is not too keen on that because the capacity of the kitchen, it's a very small kitchen in there. She doesn't, you know, she is using hard plates and, you know, forks and knives. She doesn't, she can't, you know, she doesn't use the disposable anymore, no one does really. One, there was a couple of issues that I heard that I wanted to, hopefully you planning commissioners can clarify. One is if you do make a, conditions of approval, it would be, make us feel a lot more solid, two things. One is to, to state in the conditions that the fees as iterated by Mara are, and subject to change by the city council, are the fees that will be charged because even looking at the fee schedule, I'm personally confused by it all. And I've talked to three different people and gotten three different answers. So I hope that if, if this is going to be $1,000 a year, we're wasting our time. But if it's going to be what Mara said, that's reasonable enough. Personally, I think the city should be waiving those fees because there's other events and stuff that happen in there and the display thing. I mean, the whole purpose was to get people, you know, to interact with the, with the arcade and it only benefits the city. The other thing that kind of is a, it is a major concern of ours is we are required to put out nice tables, metal tables, black, they are very heavy. We do not have a place to put those tables when we shut down. So if putting them away means cleaning them up and setting them aside, maybe on that west wall in front of the kitchen door type thing, that won't impede any traffic because it's an open area there. The only doors in that area are either to the restaurant or to the, to the kitchen. No one's using those doors when the restaurant's closed. The other businesses don't bring their stuff inside. They clean it up, they stack it and they put it on the side and they, sometimes they'll put a a security cable around it. That's kind of what, that's the only thing we can do. I know you see a plan there with, I think, four large tables. In all likelihood, unless there's an issue like COVID again, you're not going to see that. You'll probably see one or two tables at most. So hopefully that answered some of the questions you may have brought up. We look forward to working with the city and, and, you know, getting this done so we can get back to business. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Can I ask one or two?
Please, go ahead.
So if I understand what you're saying is that basically this is not going to be used most of the time in case there's like a few exceptional customers they've had for years that can't be comfortable inside? So I'm a little unclear, like what are you going to do on a regular basis? You going to put out so many chairs every day or?
No, they will stay stored unless, I, I, I have encouraged Jenny when she has large parties. On one, you know, just a little background, I have a background in the restaurant business and that's one of the reasons to help Jenny out. But one of the issues that we have is when you have a large party of like six or eight, if you've been in Bonnie Lou's, hopefully you all have, it takes up several tables. Those parties tend to stay longer. We love those parties. Jenny always tries to accommodate, you know, birthdays and a lot of locals want to have, you know, eight people come in town. I've encouraged her to use that outdoor space for those larger parties. Unfortunately, we have to dedicate a server when we do that kind of thing. We're hoping with this approval, we might try it, although I think Jenny might, might not be too keen on it, but it is something I'm, I'm trying to work out with her. We feel like this might be somewhat helpful. The majority of time, yeah, she's not able to really use it because the kitchen's not big enough. Especially on the weekends, if you've been there, maybe after nine to 11:30 and then from 12 to two, it's a very busy restaurant on Saturdays and Sundays and there's a line. And what she'll probably do is maybe serve coffee out there on one of the tables or just have people sit and wait until their table's ready. I think one of you may have mentioned that little pathway next to the register, back to the restrooms. That can get crowded when people are waiting, so we probably encourage people to go outside, have a coffee and wait for their table. That, that's always nice. It kind of clears the restaurant, makes it easier for the service to get back and forth, that kind of thing. But in no way are you going to, unless we have another outbreak, which again, I think, you know, we just don't have time to wait for city council to make moves on stuff like that. That costs Jenny a tremendous amount of money. They did the best they can and quite frankly, I don't think, if James Vega wasn't there, I'm not sure it ever would have happened. And so I have concerns about that and being able to move quickly so she doesn't lose that business. I mean, every day that Jenny has to close on something like that, it's, it's a person's salary. It's someone that's living in Ojai that is not getting paid. And again, in my opinion, when the city has an opportunity to get people outdoors and enjoy... when the city has an opportunity to get people outdoors and enjoy this city, not only should they not be charging for it, but they should be facilitating it and making it easy. I am very disturbed by the lack of reach out to these small businesses, this is the heartbeat of this town. And I realize the city makes most of their money on TOT tax and other things, but those people aren't coming to Ojai to get in a hotel room, they're coming to Ojai to visit these small businesses, and they are going out of business. And if we don't open up this town and let people enjoy themselves, it's not going to be an enjoyable town. That's my opinion.
So yes, as you understand, we don't do fees, that's the city council. My other question is sort of following up on what you just said. So I would assume if someone has a large party, they're going to have to notify Bonnie Lou in advance because you won't have the tables out there unless you putting them out there already, that's one question, the second is, have they considered doing takeout where people could just order?
They do that now.
They do that.
And just sit out there and use the outdoor facility? You couldn't do that, okay.
One of the conditions.
That's one of the conditions you can't do, I see, I see, okay.
I mean, I don't necessarily agree with that condition, but, you know, why not? I don't, I, I think that to me is a little bit, Jenny, you know, doesn't, she's, she's serving on hard plates and real forks and knives, but if people take it to go, why not allow them a table outside, although, I don't know, I don't know that a lot, people usually, when they want it to go, they want it to go, they're not going to eat it outside anyways. You know, they, they're going away, they're going out, and it's usually because they don't want to be around a lot of people because of the various, you know, COVID and monkeypox, all those things going around. But I do, I do understand that comment.
So I have seen people, and I do use that courtyard a lot, seen people that passed your hours, that happened to have coffee and wanted to sit down and talk, and they just actually go sit at your tables. So that's probably a liability issue, I assume.
There are no tables outside.
When the tables were out, yes, they, they would sit there, even though they weren't customers, this was after you'd closed.
When, when, okay, after we closed, let's be, clarify this. During COVID, after the close, those tables were put inside. They were foldable, they were not out.
They were, the, those white plastic tables were folded and stuck.
Yeah, they just hadn't put them away yet because it was, you know, it'd be in the afternoon, three or four o'clock, and I'd see people out there sitting with a cup of coffee.
And when there's an issue with, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but we would never kick a, we would never kick a customer out of a table if they're enjoying a coffee. And I'm not really sure what's wrong with that anyways, but.
I wasn't saying it was, I just was pointing that out that, you know, maybe that's a good thing.
I think it's a good thing when people hang out and have a coffee for the afternoon, what's wrong with that?
I have no problem with it personally.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant? If not, I do. I, I just want to make sure, Mr. Becker, that, that the owner understands the conditions of use of this CUP, TUP, MCUP, whatever, whichever one it is right now, and DRP, that, that the use of that property for that purpose must commence within six months, and that if it is not used for that purpose for a period of six months, the permits go away. Is the owner aware of that?
She is aware that she has to at least use it within that six months, that doesn't mean she has to have a full fledged patio going there every day, that's our understanding.
I don't see that in the requirement here, it's just, it's an allowance, not a requirement, to have six tables and 24 seats. By the way, prior to this, this time, when everything went back indoors, there were a lot of white plastic folding tables out there, that's what was used. And they were all folded up, and they were stored in that little ante room that's between the restaurant and the patio. I don't know how you get 24 chairs in there, that's a separate problem, but it is the owner's to deal with.
Yeah, the only, Steve, thank you for, Commissioner Chairman, thank you for mentioning that, that is exactly what we did, Jenny was diligent. I mean, beyond anything I've ever seen in cleaning up that patio every single day. And what people did do, and maybe this is what the other commissioners referring to, is there are a couple of benches out there, and people do linger there, have coffee, and, you know, sometimes they'd have their plastic, you know, box of stuff, and yeah, there's nothing we can do about it, but yeah, that's true. By the way, that whole area, if you've been there locally, has been repainted, and it's quite, it was definitely in need of reconditioning, and that has been done by the building owner, and it's quite nice out there.
Going on lately, there's been some construction out there on the backside of shops between Bonnie Lou's and the vine. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Oh, well, let's hear from the owner. Is this Jenny or Lori?
No, Jenny.
Jenny. Did you miss that voice?
Yeah, we need some food.
Go ahead, please.
Lori's retired.
Hi.
Hi.
Me, Jenny. Am I, can you hear me? Yeah.
Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Great.
Did you have anything to say, Jenny? Comments?
Let's see. Maybe, maybe only the, so you're saying the tables have, if, they have to be the black pewter if we want to use tables? And they have to be put inside or just set outside?
The proposal was for the, for the black, and so that's what's been presented to the planning commission tonight. And there is a condition that they be put away, and, but there's been discussion tonight about where that is. And so that should be determined through the commission tonight.
Right, okay, yes, because there will be nowhere to put black pewter tables heavy, you know, inside the restaurant, if we were to use, you know, a couple of them out there.
You can, you can put them in that little ante room between the restaurant and the patio. You used to store the white plastic tables there.
Yeah, because those folded up, other than that, we.
Oh, these don't fold?
Right. We're talking about using, we have to use the black pewter, which I imagine would be heavy.
Well.
Why is?
Why, why was the black pewter proposed?
Yeah.
I don't know, we can, can we use the white folding plastic tables then?
If the, if the commission says yes, then yes.
That makes sense.
Is this a design thing?
This is the tables that were used previously when it was all outdoor dining.
Yeah, I think we were looking for something more long term in terms of the material, something that had more of a design appeal to it, I'm not sure that a plastic table with plastic chairs has much of a design appeal in the courtyard area. That was why we were looking, from, from a staff standpoint, from a design standpoint, we were looking for something a little bit more.
So the, the black powder coated.
That was the proposal.
Was, was something suggested by staff?
No, it was what they came up with in terms of a solution, going away from the, the tables and the chairs that they had used previously.
Some kind of table available that would fold, and that would be a little bit of an upgrade from a plastic table?
I would offer that up to Troy or to, to Jenny.
Not by knowledge, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, there, there could very well be an in between. I mean, we're looking at a scale, a sliding scale, there's lots of different options.
The, I look at the, at the site plan here, the overall site plan, A 1.00, and it shows some of the businesses in the, in the same general area. Right behind the vine, there is, I presume that's public property also. And seems to me there are tables and even umbrellas that are out there 24/7.
Right, wait a second. Are they pewter or are they plastic?
I don't, I haven't even looked closely at the tables.
Okay.
But, but I think they're out all the time, whether the vine is, is open or not open.
I think the difference is that the, the other restaurants there have, have a border around them, which was required by the ABC for liquor license.
And it doesn't interfere with the, the traffic.
It was a liquor license issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, we'd probably just, it'd be easiest to use the plastic tables that we already have. Or something.
Aesthetically nicer.
Aesthetically nicer.
Or you'd put six non-folding tables.
Do they make fake pewter, plastic looking tables that can fold up? Because they make fake everything.
I think the reality is, is that if this commission is okay with the, with the locations of these, these tables and chairs, I think we can, if the commission is okay, we can always go back and, and work with them to find some sort of sliding scale.
So we can change.
Staff, staff is not necessarily comfortable with the plastic tables and, and chairs, but recognizing, hold on, recognizing that there is a bit of a logistics issue with storing those in an area that's somewhat out of the public right of way and out of kind of sight to a certain degree. There are a multitude of different examples that we could use, and, and certainly if you're giving, if you could give staff that opportunity, if the commission is okay with the condition to use for, make, make that a condition that staff work with the applicant on that material.
I don't think you have the style of chair listed in these conditions.
No, but it's a part of the attachment, is a part of this.
I see.
Right, it just says go, it says go with what's there.
Okay, that's fine.
And Luke, as part of the condition, then, condition six says, removed from the courtyard nightly and secured within the restaurant space.
Right.
Now, that was, that was possible with the holding tables.
Space, but does that include the public right of way, is that their space?
No.
No, that includes.
No.
Out of the public right of way.
The intent of that is the restaurant space itself, if they're identifying that it can't be within there, then we've got to find an alternative location.
Is, is that area between the restrooms and the restaurant, is that part of your, your property?
The restaurant space, yeah.
It is, it's all restaurant space, so they can lock that up at night and they can easily, so.
Yes, also share that backroom space with two other businesses, they use our restrooms. So they have two back doors within our back door, inside.
Okay, and does that space stay open after you close?
We lock the back door, but they use it, they are, they go out there to go to the bathroom.
They lock this door, and that space is right here.
They have to have clear walkway, for sure, yeah.
Outside door gets locked when you leave?
Correct, the back door, so that people don't go in there and get our stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
And just me.
You know, I, I think we should.
We should hear from the public first, before we deliberate.
Yeah, that's true. If we have more questions.
Hear from you all, all evening. I was just asking questions, I was, I was asking the applicant a question. If you got one with the applicant, go ahead.
If we have more questions for the applicant or for staff, then let's surface them. I, I have a question, and that is, can we, can we come up with some flexible language that allow you to work this out with the, with the applicant? If, if so, that's all I need to know.
Let's move on.
Yes, yes, you can.
Staff is flexible that way, okay. Then I, I thank the applicant and the applicant's representative, and we will go to public comment. And I see a card here for both items two and three, Larry?
Larry Stein Gold, Ojai. I support this, I mean, it's a good, a good thing for business. I'm a little confused, though, I, I realize it's 900 square feet and six tables, but we kept hearing one table at most, one coffee, a few people, I mean, they either want six tables, or in 24 seats or one table. I mean, it's either or, I mean, give them what they want, don't give them what they want, but give them what they're asking for. The other questions I had were more about policy, I mean, regarding fees and things, I know you guys don't set it, but would it be based on square footage or market value or something, just pulling it out of your. Yeah, okay. Other than that, I mean, I think it's good for business that we're supporting business and we want them to keep going, but it is all about money. They needed to expand their business, they needed to keep customers going, outside eating is fine, everywhere else in the country is doing it. Why can't we do it here with a lot less aggravation? A cup, I mean, I mean, this is like aggravation. Why? They want to sit outside, cut them a deal, make it happen, and that's what you're doing. But the 900 feet, six tables, 24 versus one table at most, Mr. Becker, are you still there?
No, you're not, you can't address, you can only address us.
If you could ask him, if one table at most is six tables or 24, I mean, he's the applicant, but I would go with the owners of Bonnie Lou, and it's for their business, I assume he's helping them and not, he's overselling, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to comment on item two? Sherry, anybody in the waiting room with hand raised? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and come back to deliberation. So, so you taped off the patio and said that's 900 square feet? And what, what fee does that determine?
Well, the applicant provided a site plan, and it's actually between 800 and 900 square feet, and so they determined that that's the area that they'd like to put their six tables, four chairs each within. And I think what they were saying also is that sometimes they wouldn't have six tables out there, but they wanted a maximum of six in case they need to have outdoor dining at some time. And then as far as how the fees are established, the fees are established by the city council, and my staff's understanding is that for this application, it would be 320 or 325 dollars to establish the outdoor dining in the public right of way, and then 85 dollars a year thereafter.
Yeah, I, I remember the numbers that, that you spoke to us earlier. Does this mean that either the 325 or the 85 is, is determined by the 900 square feet? Or is it just, it was outside and it's 325, and it's 85 because it's an encroachment permit?
Yeah, so those fees have adjusted over, over time, so right now, in terms of outdoor dining, it's the way in which Mara just described it, which is that initial fee and then the annual fee. In certain circumstances, you're looking at that square footage.
That is not denominated by the area of the outdoor.
Right, so for what we're talking about in terms of square footage, we're just identifying the general area. So 900 square feet is the general area in which it's being occupied.
Let me, let me ask it a little differently. If they said we need 600 square feet, would either the 325 or the 85 be a different number?
No.
Okay. Very good.
And just to clarify, those fees are for the permits, right?
For the encroachment permit.
Right, encroachment, gotcha, yeah, everyone pays the same, okay. And then they said it was a reasonable fee.
Any other questions or comments of staff? I, I have just a couple. On attachment A, which is the resolution, condition number one on page three. If, if we, if we said, after, which, it says tables and chairs which include six tables with seating for four each. If we said which include up to six tables, is that a problem for anyone?
That's not a problem to adjust this condition to say that.
If, if no one objects, I'd like to see those words put in, up to six tables.
That provides that flexibility.
On page four of attachment A, condition seven, the last couple of lines, it says allow refuse or debris on the sidewalk. That really doesn't come into play here, I think, unless, I, I think of the sidewalk at least as what's in front of the restaurant, abutting Ojai Avenue, and this is behind. And, and if I, I may be wrong, but if not, I'd like to see on the sidewalk changed to in the public right of way.
I would, yes, I would suggest that.
And, and the latter would be more appropriate as a general statement in any case, because then it includes both the sidewalk and areas like this patio.
Yes.
Okay, condition 10, same page. It says no amplified music. Right now, those of us that have eaten at Bonnie Lou's know that they play Sirius XM or I don't know what, some kind of music. And they have some small speakers inside the restaurant, and they typically have put one on a chair just outside the door so that people on the patio. people on the patio heard the same music. Is, is that, is that considered amplified music and therefore verboten by condition number 10?
I want to acknowledge that you asked me that question prior to the meeting, and I did not respond to it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I was going to look into it, and I believe that it is considered ampli-, that, I'm going to let you answer that.
Anything with a speaker is amplified music.
Correct, yeah. It would be amplified music.
And so this condition then would require no speaker for the outdoor seating?
Correct.
And that, is that consistent with other restaurants that are in the patio?
Yes, yes. There are, there are limitations, with the exception of maybe, maybe The Vine. I'm trying to think of one in particular.
I think there's, there's, there's seating behind two or three or four restaurants. Sage is one, but the, uh, the Japanese burger place, there's seating behind.
So it would be dependent on their conditional use.
And The Vine has live music, but I don't know if it plays outside or not.
I haven't seen any speakers out there, but it may.
I don't know.
I, I would hope we come up with something more universal than the definition of amplified music, which we spent a lot of time on with the Rancho Inn and other locations.
Yeah.
I thought we had come to some agreement that what we're talking about is the volume. It's not whether or not it's amplified.
I'd rather just see compliance with the noise state standards and stop there.
Right.
Well, but see, the problem with this one, it's that there's no boundary. You know, so how do you do a noise thing? You know, you're walking right next to it.
Well, you, you walk around the, walk around the perimeter of the area that was defined in the site plan, I guess.
It just seems like we start getting into noise ordinances in a, in a patio.
The noise ordinance applies in any case.
With noise instruments to say, well, I don't like that noise. I don't know, it just seems like getting kind of nitpicky, rather than having a clear standard.
Actually, what we tried to do when we came up with this issue at the Rancho Inn is just say, you know, you'll be 45 and 55 dB depending on the time of day. And, uh, and it didn't matter whether or not there was amplification or no amplification. It was, you know, it had to be, it had to meet the decibel level.
This seems like a, a different situation, because the patio is right there. Everybody is using this patio, and it's not like a next-door business, you know, that's, that's separated by their land. This is literally everyone walking down the patio. Do we want them all to have to hear the music of each restaurant as they walk by?
How back, there are no other restaurants except for The Vine.
There's people back there, though.
Except The Vine.
Trying to have a, you know, they.
Not many.
I just, I, you know, I just, um, I think, if we're going to all allow to do it, then do it, if we're not, then not have it.
Well, everyone has, it, part of condition 10 is compliance with code title five, chapter 11 noise standards. My feeling is that should be enough.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I think we should strike that last sentence.
And just strike the second sentence.
Strike that last sentence.
In number 10.
I.
I agree.
And, and finally, uh, condition 12 talks about, prior to commencing construction, a building permit may be required. I don't see any construction here. I'm just curious whether condition 12 is required.
It's a standard condition, and, um, and I left it in consciously because it just kind of reminds the applicant that, that there's, that there isn't any construction as part of this project.
Okay, so it may not apply, but it doesn't hurt to be there if it doesn't.
Exactly.
Is that about right, Epi?
That's correct. I, I suggest that the commission, um, with staff's advice, maintain the condition in there.
Okay. Any other suggestions during our deliberations here? I've seen.
I have a question.
Suggestions on three changes. Yes, Lucas?
Given the parameters that we had heard from the applicant slash business owner, uh, six may need to be modified as well on condition six.
And, and instead of all furnishings, should we say chairs must be removed?
I think they want all furnishings, otherwise.
Well, it all depends.
But no, the change was that it's not going to be nightly, it's when, because didn't they say?
It's just after closing.
All he said was during off-hours.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um, but whether they can be removed.
Are they going to be folding, or are they going to be steel, or, because you can't store.
They're going to work that out.
They're going to work that out.
Okay, you're going to work that one out.
That would be an added condition that the planning commission would, um, would create during your.
Well, let's, well, let's, let's see if we can't find something that we can agree on and leave it to staff to work it out. And actually conclude the business tonight if we can. Maybe six should just say, um, "All furnishings..." I'm sorry. "The, the applicant shall work with city staff on the logistics of removing furnishings from the outdoor seating area night, uh, during off-hours." Leave it at that. And, and.
A friendly amendment.
Sherry wants you.
May I propose a friendly amendment that says that the, that the applicant will work with the staff to select, um, the furniture, the foldable furniture, um, which will.
Which will be.
Which will allow clearance, clearing the, yeah. I like that.
But allow them to remove from the, you know, from the space.
Now say it again, Jamie.
Say again?
Now say it again.
I'm losing my voice, if I say one more thing.
Chair Quilce, can we, can we listen to Troy? I think he has something to say real quick.
Okay, I guess, yeah, this is not really opening, reopening the public hearing. We're still talking with the applicant. Uh, please go ahead, sir. I know, we keep switching things on you, Sherry.
Sorry, Sherry.
But you're good.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, was there a question in all that?
No. Uh, I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
As, as the applicant, do you prefer steel tables and chairs, or do you prefer foldable plastic chairs and tables?
Foldable plastic chairs and chairs and table for sure, if, uh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the right answer. We, you know, we don't want to.
It's an answer.
It's, it's an answer.
It's an answer.
And it's, and it's furnishings that already exist.
Right.
That's the, the two characteristics there.
But we've, we've agreed to let the, our staff, sorry.
Well, sure.
Work out what they consider appropriate.
I was just, I was, I was just curious on what they preferred.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would prefer to use what they have.
By the way, there is amplified music from various restaurants every weekend in that courtyard, and that courtyard was built for that. There's even a deck for a band.
Okay, so, so we're looking, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
We're looking at condition six and wording like, "Have the applicant work with city staff to establish appropriate furnishings."
There you go. I like that.
Uh, that, that allow clearance of the outdoor seating space during off-hours. Something like that?
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, that sounds good.
I personally, I've eaten at those plastic tables, and I didn't have a problem with it, but other people may, and, and staff may.
It looks like a garage sale. Honestly, I mean, those folding, those folding, I call them Staples tables. They cost $15.99 at Staples.
Yeah.
Makes it look like a garage sale back there. And with all of the design work that went into the creation of that plaza to put plastic folding tables back there, it's just, it's unfortunate. I don't think that's the look we want for our town.
I think what we're asking Lucas and Marianne to do is to find something that's still aesthetically pleasing, but is also foldable. And I don't know what that would be, but.
If I could also jump in here as well, I, I think the way that Chair Quilce formulated how condition six would be, um, reformatted was that it would allow the restaurant to store them, is the requirement then going to be that the restaurateur has to, uh, store them in the restaurant, or no?
I think you have to get stuff off of the public right-of-way. Although not all the restaurants are doing that.
Right. Well, I, I just know there's a comment earlier from the commission about, you know, whether it was going to be nightly or off-hours, whether the commission wanted to, you know, specify that within, you know, one hour or whatnot from the business closing.
I think during, during off-hours, you wouldn't, you wouldn't throw somebody off a table if, if the restaurant closes at two and somebody's still sitting there at 10 after two, you're not going to pick up the table and move it out from under them, so.
I, I think that going, because you just raised an issue to clarify, we're asking that they remove the tables from the public space. Where they put them is not our business. If they had a van they could stick them in or something, you know, and take them home. I'm not saying they would, but that's, I don't know, but we need to specify that they have to put them in any particular place.
I'm, I'm also still interested, I know there's a patio behind Sage Restaurant. Is that public property?
Yes.
Are the tables removed from that area every night?
No, they're, and Monte Grapo is the same way. Monte Grapo, they basically push them up against the building and then put a tarp over them and kind of chain them up, basically.
And again, they have an enclosed, somewhat enclosed area because of.
They put a little, they put a little fence around their area.
It has to be, it's a permanent, it's, it's a fixed barrier.
I, I do recall back when all the dining was outdoors, that, that this restaurant was putting up little temporary, uh, lines across to define the area. Is, is that, is?
Monte Grapo was one of the 16 that ended up expanding their outdoor dining area temporarily.
I think.
Monte Grapo.
Now they're, now they're back to a smaller but allowable outdoor area? That's not on public property?
No, it's on public property still, yes.
But it's their original, uh, conditional use permit.
They went back to the space they had before COVID, basically.
They ballooned out with their TUP, and then they shrunk back.
Okay. And they're still, then they're still paying for an annual encroachment permit, okay? And The Vine is the same way, they've got a little fence around some of that public property. So if this applicant put a little fence around part of the patio, would that solve the problem?
The difference with this is, is that, um, the outside walls there that are surrounding or taking up two sides of their outdoor dining area belong to other businesses. They don't have the same, uh, situation, physical situation as these other, as the other restaurants that do have the physical barrier.
They have, they have adjacent businesses, some of which are restaurants, yeah?
Right, but if they, if these, if this applicant were to put a barrier around it, they would, they would include somebody else's door. Someone else's back door, on either side.
Oh, I, oh, there, actually, there's, there's a passageway that could be defined next to the building.
Yeah.
On, on, on both the east and the south sides.
It could, it's just a little messier with Bonnie Lou's because of the orientation. It's kind of tucked in a corner, and then you've got other businesses that kind of spread out.
I don't even know that this applicant would want to leave furnishings out in the patio overnight anyway.
There, I mean, it runs the risk of theft. I mean, I've seen that in other cities where if they're not chained up or removed nightly.
Well, I, I saw chaining up of the little mushroom heaters, uh, but that was while everything was outdoors, too.
Right.
So, so what's a, what's an equitable kind of requirement here then?
I thought we reached it.
They're going to work with staff.
They're going to work with the staff to.
Figure out something.
To remove the furniture, whatever it is at the, after they're closing their hours, and we're not asking where they put it, just ask that they remove it from the public space.
Well, secured within the restaurant space seems to work to me. That, that's.
It depends on how much space the furnishings take, yeah.
Yeah, if you've got a bunch of steel tables.
As long as it's not in the public space, we don't really care where they secure it.
I don't really care where they secure it at night.
We should strike that off.
But it sounds to me like they need something that folds, and you'll work at finding something that folds and looks nice.
So, so in condition six, we would, we would change nightly to during off-hours, and we would delete and secured within the restaurant space?
I think so.
Because it could be anywhere.
Yep, it could be anywhere.
It could be, it could be anywhere.
Yeah, allow them that flexibility.
Does that sound about right? Okay, so that's, that's condition six.
I have one question, and it's probably not anything you can do about, because I asked whether they would be interested in people, um, coming in, like, essentially it's crowded, get a takeout and just literally take it out themselves and sit out there? Now you have to be served, you know, there's, there's no onsite dining with a takeout. Is that a health issue, or why, why is that prohibited?
It's condition, condition three.
But why is it?
It's kind of, yeah, I'm just saying, is that needed? I mean, it would seem like the tables are out there, and if the place is crowded, and I say, "Hey, I'd like to do takeout," and I'll just walk out there with my food, what's the problem?
So, the, the reason for that condition is, is to follow up with not using any plastic, um, dining ware, and so it's to discourage doing that.
So it's, it's a part of condition two and a part of condition three.
Okay. So why is a, a plastic dining ware a problem?
Um, the environment.
Oh, okay. What if it was paper, though?
I, I, I'll jump in here, it's also banned by the city's code.
I see.
So, um, I don't have the code section in front of me, but if you give me a second.
So if it wasn't plastic.
Plastic ware and styrofoam clamshells are for takeout.
So if there was another way that people could do takeout that wasn't plastic, that would be an issue?
There are, although there, there are state laws on that issue, but that's outside of this commission's ambit.
But I mean, I can walk in any restaurant and order takeout, and then walk back into the patio and just sit down and eat it. Can I?
Would, would you be breaking some part of the city code by doing that?
They may or may not be interested in you doing that. Would you tip, or would this be a way in which you could avoid tipping?
They, they, they said that they would like to be able to do that, that's all I'm raising, you know?
I think per this condition, they wouldn't be able to do that.
I've been there where it's so crowded, like, you can't, you know, you're waiting a long time, it's like, whoa, can I get my moot food down and just sit outside myself? I don't know, maybe it's not.
It's, it's in the conditions right now, but the conditions at the end of the day are going to be whatever the commission says.
Yeah, so I just wondered about it.
But, but that's the backstory regarding, it, it's section five, uh, dash 14.102 of the, uh, the city municipal code.
You can't have plastic.
Which deals with plastic or disposable, disposable, excuse me, food service ware.
That was waived during COVID.
That was waived during COVID, I believe.
And it's not currently waived.
And it's not currently waived, and, um, and that's why this is a focus.
You said disposable, is that the term you used? Because there's the coffee shop that has a courtyard in the back, and you can go order your scone or whatever and go sit out there and eat.
No.
How's that any different?
Or on the sidewalk.
Or on the sidewalk. Yeah, you can go in those places and get.
I, I can't speak to examples that are not, I'm not familiar with, um, but the, it may not be plastic, um, or.
Well, that was my question. They, assuming it's not plastic, why would that be a problem?
Right.
Okay. Condition two says, "The only disposable plastic tableware provided by the restaurant shall be for off, oh, for off-site takeout dining." Okay?
That's correct.
And if people purchase it for off-site takeout dining and then don't use it that way, who's at fault?
Well, it's, it's discouraged. These conditions are discouraging that, and so it, I, it would be on the applicant, though. If the applicant is allowing, the applicant being.
The applicant has to control its customers?
Well, if it's on their, on their outdoor dining area.
We would be controlling that. If we're finding out, we get a complaint regarding it.
But it would.
Violation of their, of one of these, this is a condition.
But it would be on the, but it would be on the applicant.
It's a condition, but it's a condition only if the commission says it's a condition.
Yes, exactly. If this commission agrees with that condition, then it would be enforced, just like any other condition with any other, um, approval.
But it would be enforced with the applicant, with the restaurateur.
Yes, exactly.
Because these are conditions on the applicant, I understand that.
Yes. Yes.
I'm, I'm just curious if, because we've run into this situation before. You know, we've talked about this with, with other cases. How much can the city require an applicant to do in terms of code compliance with third parties, namely patrons? It's, it's not clear to me that, that once a patron decides to do something that violates a condition on the applicant, that you can force the applicant to enforce the code. I don't know.
In this case, it would be the condition specifically placed on, on them. And it's been explained to the applicant already. And they've already acknowledged that they recognize that through this condition. So they already know and not, not interested in doing it. I think what you're talking more is in general terms.
In, in general terms, well, let's take a specific, though. Let's say someone goes into this restaurant, they order some takeout. They get the food. It's in a clam shell with plastic table ware. And they head out the back door and there's a table. And they say, well, I think I'll just sit down and eat here because it's a nice patio. Is the applicant then supposed to chase them off?
I think at that point, the, the applicant is, is supposed to be doing what you're just mentioning, which is discouraging them from doing that or even educating in the very beginning. If it continues to be an issue and then the city's made aware of it.
Okay, the applicant could say that the patron. This, this area is really for regular table service.
Yes. It's intended for regular table service, your typical wares, silverware and whatnot.
Okay.
Not what we're talking about in terms of takeout. That's, that was the whole purpose of that condition.
Okay. And all patrons consuming food and drink in the outdoor must be served by restaurant staff. That at least, if we're talking about restaurant staff at least, that's controllable by the applicant, I understand that.
Yeah, and should we say outdoor dining shall be discouraged for offsite takeout dining instead of not be used for? Because then that requires enforcement.
Well, discourage and enforcement are kind of the same thing, but.
Yeah, I mean, discouraged is a little lesser.
Yes. It's a little lesser.
The shower and.
Yes.
Let me point out, unless something's changed, they, they did have a beer and wine permit there. And so the service that they could provide with an employee is, in addition to food, on plates which would then be cleared and washed, would be alcohol service, which wouldn't otherwise be able to be done. And you're shaking your head, but you can see.
Alcohol would not be allowed.
Yeah.
Alcohol would not be allowed.
They sell alcohol in Bonnie Lou's in the restaurant.
In the restaurant would be fine, but not out.
Not outside, okay.
How, is there, is there a, a place in the code that says that? That you can have a, an alcohol license, but you can't use it for outdoor seating on public property?
Sage does that.
The, the license through the alcohol beverage control.
ABC.
The ABC is the one who distributes a license and there are boundaries to that particular license. So for instance, if they're, they, Sage may have an ABC, license from ABC that includes that outdoor dining area. And that's why it has a barrier around it, because that's also one of their requirements. There are other restaurants also that have an ABC license that includes outdoor dining that has, that have been before you. And again, they have to have a barrier around it. So Bonnie Lou's, this is new and we have not seen an application from the ABC that includes outdoor service for beer and wine.
Then they'd have to have a barrier.
So that would.
Doesn't seem practical to have a barrier, so.
Okay. I was gonna say, I, I don't drink with my breakfast, which is what I typically eat there. So I've just not, not observed that.
Bloody Mary? Bloody Marys?
Hair of the dog, no. All right, well, as I see it, the, the commission has so far suggested on condition one, adding up to six tables. On condition six, we are, after the word courtyard, saying during off hours and stop there and delete the rest of that sentence. Condition seven, lines four and five, on the sidewalk, change to in the public right of way. As a more general statement. And.
Ten.
Ten.
Second sentence.
Just delete the second sentence. Doesn't matter if it's amplified or not, they have to meet the noise standards.
And on three, did you want to change not and replace it with discouraged, shall be discouraged?
Outdoor dining shall be discouraged?
I'm sorry, what?
No, it's not outdoor dining, it's.
The outdoor dining shall be discouraged for offsite takeout, meaning, oh, yeah, that does make sense.
Yeah.
Outdoor dining shall not be used.
That, that at least is controllable by the applicant.
Yeah.
I think I'd leave three alone.
The way it is.
So we've got changes to one, six, seven, and ten.
If anyone ever comes up with wooden forks and spoons and so forth and plates, then we could, you could do takeout.
We could talk some more.
Long as it's, long as it's not plastic.
Yeah.
One additional condition that was being kicked around by the commission was the applicant working with staff regarding the, the design.
Oh, yeah, that's in, that's in six, right. The applicant shall work with staff to devise a solution to.
Appropriate furniture for the.
To establish appropriate furnishings.
Establish appropriate furnishings and removal from the public right of way during off hours.
Yep.
Is that sufficient for you?
Is, if the public right of, does the public right of way then include the, the size of a table up against the wall? You talked about people putting tables up against the wall and, and apparently complying with.
The difference was those, they were in, they were in closed off spaces. That it was just for that business right behind it, it's not.
But the enclosed space, was that because it was outdoor seating or was it because of alcohol?
Well, the enclosed is because of alcohol, but they, they're not, no other businesses are like sharing that space, I guess you would say. That's probably the.
Yeah, Mud Lotus shares that space and they roll their racks of clothing out into that same space.
That's true, right. Yeah, you've got to be conscious of other businesses within that general vicinity.
They haven't liked this.
So this one is looking unique.
I think giving us, giving staff the general parameters that you've just mentioned here gives us the ammunition to work with. I hate to say ammunition, but the, the forethought to work with the applicant on this.
Okay. Anything else we want to modify in these conditions? The rest of it's standard legal requirements, boilerplate, no offense, Epi.
No, he, it was specific, but just for this, he spent hours crafting these things.
Then shall we have a motion to approve item two as amended?
I will move that we approve item two as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Do we approve item two as amended?
Any, any discussion? All right, Sherri, let's call a roll on item two then.
Colsey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item three on the agenda is a director's exemption and minor conditional use permit. Staff, go ahead. For another, for another restaurant.
Yes, this application is for another restaurant, Nociola, located at three fourteen El Paseo Road. The project is also a, well, it's actually, it's, it's different because it's on private property. It's a request for a director's exemption and minor conditional use permit for a permanent outdoor dining facility to accommodate approximately twenty patrons. The dining is on a porch that's adjacent to El Paseo Road associated with this restaurant. And as with the previous request, the outdoor or the temporary dining was previously approved during COVID indoor dining restrictions. And when the dining restrictions were lifted, staff reached out to business owners, including this applicant, and encouraged them to apply if they wanted to extend their dining permits, which they are requesting to do. In total, oh, I was going to talk about the four businesses, however, there were four, but one dropped out because of concerns from the neighborhood. And so they withdrew their application and so we have three and this is one of the three.
This is the third of three.
Yes, yes, thank you. So the proposed area for this dining is on a porch that's on a street facing side yard, which is El Paseo. And there are five tables, four seats each, so twenty patrons. The style and the location and the color of the porch and the railing on the porch is architecturally blending with the existing building. And also proposed with this application are tivoli lights, which are, which would be shaded as, as conditioned, actually, they would be conditioned to do that. Currently, there is a temporary wooden canopy structure above this, above the seating on the porch. And that's proposed to be removed as part of this permit, to make sure that that is not included in this permit for, with the request and the recommendation of approval. And the applicant is not proposing any overhead shading because they don't open to the public until five o'clock. So they're not proposing umbrellas or any other type of shading. What, regarding the tivoli lights, one of the conditions would be that the lights are not attached to any of the existing trees. Any, any landscaping, actually, they would have to be located, attached to the structure.
Wooden framing there all the way along right now.
That wooden framing is part of the canopy structure that I just said will be removed. It's not part of the application, so.
Okay, that and the metal roof.
Yes, exactly. The metal roof, those, those are the wood and metal canopy structures.
Okay.
There, they would have to go through the building permit process and they probably would not comply.
Building permit process to remove that stuff?
No, to, to structurally make it structurally appropriate. I'm not sure what, what language to use with that. And, and they're proposing to remove it. It's not part of this application. And again, they're not going to even replace it with, with umbrellas because they don't open until the evening. And what I wanted to talk about the tivoli lights is that they, the tivoli lights will have to be strung up and there won't be that canopy structure to string them on so they can be attached to the structure, the building, the, the actual restaurant building. And then they could install posts, but they cannot attach the tivoli lights to the trees. Okay. If the commission approves this request, staff would like to include the condition number two from the previous application that essentially the applicant would discontinue providing the disposable plastic ware for, for any use except for takeout. And that would be for consistency and also to follow the municipal code and the state code. And, let's see. This is an outdoor dining facility. It's on private property and not on the public right of way. And so they're not going to have the encroachment permits that were discussed for the last project. And staff is recommending approval. We do have the applicant here, if you have questions. And it looks like Lucas wants to add something.
Okay, go ahead.
Just itching over here to say something. Okay, so I, the, the thing that I wanted to say, all three of these applications that this commission has seen at this point, in certain circumstances, for instance, this one's a director's exemption, minor conditional use permit. Typically, that's handled at staff level. What we're looking for here is consistency with all three. That's why all three of these have come before this body. The CUP obviously comes before this body, consistency. The same thing is true with the conditions. The reason why Mara had identified the recommendation to add condition number two that was a part of the previous application that this body just approved was for consistency. And that's really what we're looking for here. We're, we're looking for consistency throughout all three of these in terms of how we've been reviewing it, how we've been addressing it and how we've been conditioning it, if staff is actually recommending approval. So in this case, staff is recommending approval and that's why we're looking for consistency with the conditions.
So that would, you're recommending that we add condition two from item two as, I guess doesn't really matter where, but it would be condition thirteen, I guess.
Fitting, yeah, either at the end or fitting somewhere within.
Put it somewhere in the middle, you've got to start renumbering all the other conditions, so.
And I'm not, the staff is not playing favorites to any of the restaurants. I don't even know if Nocchula is even using plastic or any sort of those materials. I assume not, given their high-end clientele. But we're looking for consistency regardless, consistency regardless, so.
Okay, okay. Yes, questions for staff?
My question for staff is concerning the canopy over the, over the porch. I did walk around it and, and look up at it. In fact, I drove by it several times before I realized it was right there. It was pretty innocuous. Did we bring it to their attention as part of the fact that we did not get a building permit on that originally? And so we said, by the way, all this structure here doesn't architecturally go with the building, which I argue is, is, it's sympathetic enough. I mean, are we, are we putting them through the, the hopper here?
The applicant installed these for a temporary, for a temporary situation.
Yeah.
And when we talked to them about it, their intention was to remove them. So we're not, we didn't, we didn't go in there and say, hey, you have to remove this.
He didn't say that to make you happy.
No, he did not, he did not say this to make us happy. But yes, it is a good question for the applicant.
But wouldn't they, if it's not part of their structure, it's a structural thing, they would have had to get a building permit anyway, wouldn't they? Regardless of what we thought.
That's correct.
Well, and, and need it for what they have currently because the patio is not at ground level. It floats up, it's probably.
It's well above sidewalk level.
Five or six feet off the ground in the backside.
But that requirement is not something we're imposing.
Well, there is a requirement. In, in the conditions of approval, there's a, a condition to get a building permit for.
Any changes?
Anything that you need building permit for, yeah.
Well, that's normal, isn't it?
Yes.
Without a condition even? Okay.
Other clarification questions for staff? Let's go back here. I, I would, I would ask, again, this is perhaps a, a question for the applicant, but are they, are they aware that to maintain the MCUP, you must begin exercising the permit within six months? And if you let it lapse for a period of six months, that is the outdoor seating, that that permit goes away?
The applicant has received the conditions of approval and hasn't brought that question to my attention.
Okay, okay. And no new shade structures are proposed. But you, you said a moment ago, if they want tivoli lights, they're going to have to put up poles. Is that going to require a building permit to put up poles to hang tivoli lights?
I'm doing this to Lucas because he tries to talk when I want to talk, but now I want him to answer.
Didn't touch. I, I just want to make sure we do everything by the book. And, and so the question.
Look, in, in the event that tivoli lights are going up and in the event that the, the, the structures themselves are removed by, and agreed upon by this commission, assuming that it moves forward as an approval, or that the, the structures themselves are removed and they've got to figure out how to get the tivoli lights strung up. Certainly, we would already be working with building on the structure itself in terms of that outdoor dining area. That outdoor dining area was never reviewed by building because it was considered temporary. That's how we were reviewing it. So in talking with the building official, temporary didn't require us to go through.
Temporary is a lot more flexible.
Exactly, but now we're looking at permanent. Now we're looking at as-built, which we do sometimes and on a case-by-case basis, obviously, as-built permits. The same thing would be true for stringing up the tivoli lights. If it requires a permit in terms of how it's structured or strung up, then yes. Well, we'll certainly run that through the building official and, and see if there's a permit.
It doesn't require a permit from the building official to take down this existing structure, existing temporary structure, but to put up poles to hang the tivoli lights would require a building permit of some sort?
Maybe. We would be running that through a building to see if it would.
Okay.
I can't say with certainty that it would.
Okay. Oh, and, and, yeah, all right. I have a suggestion on the resolution itself, but that can come later. Any other questions to clarify things with staff at the moment? All right, then let's hear from the applicant. Please come forward, sir. And unlike public comments, you are not limited to three minutes.
Okay.
You're the applicant, you can tell us whatever you need to tell us.
I'll make it quick. I have a question for the staff about the gazebo canopy. I did not, maybe it was a misunderstanding. I never said I want to remove them. I thought that's why you're asking me, that I have to remove them together with the tivoli lights that need shades. So I say, okay, I will take care of that. I thought that was a two-point, remove the gazebo, provide shades for a tivoli light. I didn't ask to remove the gazebo. For me, if you remove the gazebo, it's like take away the patio. I won't use it. It's not just the lights. It gets colder, rain once in a while, I'm not using the space. So either I keep everything or I remove everything. It cost me seventy, about seventy thousand dollars to build that things with the gazebo and each of them. So I don't have to talk too much about it. Either I keep. So I don't have to talk too much about it. Either I keep the gazebo, I fix the tivoli light, I'll go through the building and permits, of course, but beside that, if I have to remove five gazebo, about five thousand dollars or more for all of them, what I'm going to do with them? Throw them out? I don't know, kind of. And I don't know, why do I have to remove them? All the rest are used plastic gazebo, which I think is more, less safe than mine's. Mine has a metal roof as well, so. I just want to know why do I have to remove them when I feel like safer than all the gazebo that are seen in the winter time here?
So clearly there's a misunderstanding as far as taking down.
That's why I said I'm not putting any shade because I was a little upset. I said, you want me to spend more money and then I'm waiting for the planning commission, sorry, for the building asset to come and say, oh, I'm sorry, you spent more money, we're gonna take everything down. That's why I say I'm not putting anything. I'm not getting umbrella, I'm not getting shades because.
That's just more money.
Maybe in three months they're gonna say, sorry, take it down. So I'm not spending an, an extra penny for the building. Plus, it's not my building as well. That's another issue.
So I, is this, do you want us to answer this question first or?
That's the only question, the gazebo is the question. Because that's the only thing I think was a misunderstanding. I thought that's why you're asking me.
Yeah, I just wanted, when we met with you on site, I identified to you specifically, I said, hey, as a part of our recommendation to this body, those.
Okay, so I heard right.
And then, so then you, you had said, I'll fund other options to, to either shade, but that the outdoor dining wasn't going to go away.
We're just gonna leave it without shades.
Yeah, but you were going to keep the outdoor dining. Now you're, now you're saying that if you can't have the shade, you can't have the outdoor dining?
We have the building permits, right, the building and safety, I think. If they come and say, sorry, it's not sound, the structure is not sound, take it down. That's what I'm saying. That's why I don't want to do anything to it until I have a final answer for the final body, which would be the building and safety or whoever it is.
Yeah, in terms of a process, let's say for instance, the planning commission grants you approval, you would still be held to the standards of an as-built permit for, for the outdoor.
Until the building and safety comes. So we only extend what we already had the last few years. We just extended for six more month. So that's why I'm asking, why?
Yeah, but you're looking for.
You let me keep everything for two years and more, the way it is. Of course, I build it, it's my own fault without asking for that much permission. But now, I don't know how long it's gonna take for the building and safety to show, to show up and tell me the final answer. So.
If I can tell you, it'd be immediately. If this body approves it, you would, your next step would be tomorrow, talking with building.
Yeah, I know, but the answer, it would be when?
Yeah, so the answer depends on them going out and doing assessment, yeah.
Your approval depends, I have to comply to your conditions, right?
Right.
To, to apply for it requires me to spend time and money, then to wait until you say, okay, yes, and then tomorrow, the building says, I'm sorry. So I have to go ahead to comply to you with your request to then here, the day after, from the building and safety say, sorry, waste of time and money, take it down. That's why I don't want to do anything.
So just as a preliminary, you've already had building go out and take a preliminary, preliminary look at it. There would have to be modifications to it to bring it up to code, but it's not a teardown. And I think that's, that's important for this commission to understand and for you to understand.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's not a teardown. It would be, there would be modifications to it to ensure.
If I knew it, maybe I wouldn't even come up and say anything. You know, I didn't know that you already showed up, the building and safety showed up, you already know what has to, no, it has to be done. I just was confused about the gazebo. I saw the restaurant using gazebo, they know it's safe, it's sound as with those one that I have. They are removable, they're not like installed and constructed on the patio. They are bought online, I can take them down in about thirty minutes. And I see other gazebo around town, they actually don't, they don't feel as sound and as safe as mine. They have heaters inside with plastic roof. You know, so if you want to be equal with everybody, all the applications, then you know, I'm saying that. The tivoli lights as well, I'm not going to say much, but there's so many restaurants having Christmas light all year round. If you want to be fair and equal to everybody, you know, I already bought shades. I don't know if you noticed, I did it last week. I bought shade for the tivoli lights. So the half of it is already shaded, I have to purchase more. So I'm trying to work with you and I know that, you know, I need to. But beside doing anything else, it's all money and time spent without knowing what the future is like. As I said, yeah, maybe I am not going to put extra penny to it. I don't know if the property owner will be willing to put money for the construction. So as I said, I don't know, it might be in three months I have to take it down completely. It is not my job to, to take care of it. As a property owner, we're building a safety. If, if they don't willing to put money on the building, so that, that patio will go down. So that's why I don't want to really spend time and money on it. So it's up to you. You can say yes now, it could be not take it down tomorrow.
Let's, let's, let's bring this back to.
Thank you.
Where the commission is running the meeting.
The gazebo, my concern.
Please, please, yeah, please stay with us for a moment. We may have questions for you, sir. Question for staff, you said this is not a teardown. As I walked around and I looked at, at the structure, it looked to me like heavy-duty wooden structure, metal roof, gutters to take the runoff that would fall in between the various square metal roofs. Can, can you give us an idea of what, what you're talking about has, has to be changed with an as-built?
Yeah, it's, for an as-built, we're talking about the patio itself. So he, just, just so that we can understand.
Yeah.
During this pandemic, when this thing first started, he went through, he's actually one of the first ones that we were working through the TUPs, the temporary use permits on. Because he immediately went to work and realized that if he's going to remain in business, he needs to figure out how to get outdoor, outdoor dining. So he was kind of a test case for the rest of the sixteen, well, twenty-one in total, we talked to you, but sixteen that ended up getting the permits.
Yeah.
So his, his started with the patio, it was just the patio, and then it evolved into the, the shade structures that you're seeing. Right, that you're seeing there now today. So I think it's important to note that as well. It was, it was meant to be, I mean, all these were meant to be temporary. And if they were going to be permanent, then we were looking at how those provisions ended up working. The outdoor kind of shade structures themselves, while certainly I would, I mean, you could argue, and I think the, the business owner is arguing that as well, from a design standpoint, from a longevity standpoint, probably one of the better ones that's been constructed than we've seen. I question the design and how it reflects to the existing business and.
The existing structure doesn't have a metal roof, the patio does.
Well, I think it's more of the existing structure that's there and how it, how it speaks to that existing structure. And I'm, I'm questioning some of the roof use, like the roof lines and not necessarily the material because it's wood.
No, I'm agree with you.
Yeah, but it's, it's really more of a, of a compatibility and I, I question that compatibility.
Architectural elements and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at. And that, that's where I was saying, from a staff standpoint, we're recommending that that be removed. The patio still remain because that certainly functions and almost feels like it's been there the entire time, the way, the way it was built, so.
Without the gazebo, yeah, it looks like it belongs to the building, so I understand.
Yeah, it kind of melts in with the rest of the landscaping.
The gazebo, they're kind of, they don't match, I know, but it was a temporary things. And because we, I don't know what's going to happen in the next two months, three, five months. It's still temporary for me. So whatever I do, I'm not sure I do the right things. Until building a safety come up and the property owner then has the final word, that's, that's the only problem.
I did notice there's other.
Out of my hand. And because of that, I don't want to invest any more time and money on it, so.
I did notice that there's other outdoor seating associated with this business. It's on a covered patio that wraps around the back of the building.
Yeah.
Is that, that's outdoor seating, that's an outdoor dining facility?
That's not a part of this.
I know it's not part of this. Was that already approved?
Well, that would have been since the eighties.
I mean, that's been around for.
Twenty, forty years.
There's a lot more seating out there than there is inside.
Right.
But that was already.
Can I say one thing? I reduced my, my seating from ninety-nine cover to seventy-five covers during COVID. And I'm still keeping seventy-five covers. So the five table that I had, I should remove them from the outside. So I only moved table, I actually reduced the number of table to keep the privacy, the six feet distances. So our restaurant lost capacity in the last few years. I'm not planning to regain it. I'm happy to keep the low capacity. So that's why. The patio was there since the eighties, it was approved with the previous prop, uh.
Okay.
Business owner. So it's always been there, nothing has been done to it. We only changed the floor because it was all eaten by termite and.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions for the?
So I want to clarify with Lucas. If we approve this, you have the authority you need to negotiate? Or should we wait until you negotiated with the property owner and operator to figure out what is going to be allowed? Is this, can we complete this with approving this?
We're going to modify condition two.
Yeah, because I think one of the conditions, I think, talks about the removal of the.
Yeah, condition two.
It's to the purview of the, of the commission tonight. If you're, if you're in agreement with staff's recommendation, then it would have that, that structure itself, that coverage structure removed. If you're not in agreement and you're, you're wanting to see that remain, then you would be striking the condition that talks about that.
But that's up to building to allow it to stay.
Well, no, building, building still has other powers under the code to, to judge the, the structure itself.
I see.
And that's independent of this proposal.
Correct.
Whether it stays or goes, that's a separate function of the building department.
Yeah, what I, what I, what I want to caution this commission is not judging the, judging the design, but not judging the, the construction.
Yeah, okay.
And how that, how that impacts it.
Oh, that, that's something we need to leave to another part of staff.
Okay.
But, yeah, I, I, anyway, we don't want to get into deliberations yet. Are there any other questions for the applicant? You don't, if, if you took down the metal roofs and the gutters and all, and the big wooden structures.
Well, the gazebo have wooden posts and metal roof.
If you did that, you would not put any other shade structures up?
No, until I have the building and safety final word and tell me what to do. Because if I, you know, we have submitted some architectural plans, then we removed from this case. We have, I paid already for plans be done by an architect, but the problem is, if you say it's a teardown, then we'll have to go with that option, which is my plan B.
Yeah. The, the, the drawings that we have don't say that the shade structure stays or goes. It's only in condition two. The drawings don't show, they just show the deck and five tables.
That is, that is your, you know, it's your choice to decide what to do with them. I'll follow what you guys say, you know, it's fine.
So to expand on Steve Collessi's comment. So if you remove the temporary structure, temporary wooden canopy structures, would you still have outdoor dining on the patio?
Yeah, if the weather permits, yes.
Weather permits, okay, I got you. So then, okay, so what we're voting on?
There'd be a lot, the weather permitting would be.
Weather permits and the plan.
Ojai all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it can be a week, I don't know how long it takes for building a safety to get, you know, the process going. And then after that, I, as I said, I don't know because it's out of my hand in a way. I own the business, not the building. That should be attached to the building. So it's depend from the property owner, if they're willing to go and, you know, invest in the property, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
The area marked new outdoor seating. So I've, I've been and sat in that area several times and the back patio area several times. And when I've sat in the front area, it's, it's been on cold nights. You couldn't have put people out there if there weren't a roof. You just couldn't do it. So it would limit your capacity because you have migrated capacity that used to be inside.
Yeah, I applied the whole of ask for forgiveness instead of, you know, approval. So I did it when it was fall, I did it, I decided to just put some, the gazebo without asking. I knew it was going to happen this.
Asking forgiveness of patrons is a lot more difficult.
Yeah, losing them is very easy, so.
Being cold, I don't understand that.
Cold air falls, it'll spill off the roof.
Do you, do you really want me to tell you or?
Okay, all right.
It's freezing out there in the middle of winter. And if there's a roof there and if there are heaters, mushroom heaters out there, it's tolerable. But if there's no roof, the cold air comes down on you.
Even with heater, it wastes propane with all the heaters.
There are other places that are outdoors without roofs that have cold heaters too.
If there are, if it rains, the roof is important to have as well.
That's obviously, yeah, that's true.
So I, I would think that to have assured capacity, that it's actually critical that they have this plan.
We, we really are deliberating at this point, generally.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm answering a question. One, a question again. Do you understand that if, if the MCUP, the minor conditional use permit and, and the DRP, the designer review permit, are approved, that you are required to exercise them, that is, have outdoor seating and patrons there within six months? And that if you stop doing that for a period of six months, you lose the permits? Okay, just, just so we know. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Then, then let's open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak. I know Mr. Steingold does. Please go ahead, sir.
I like it, Larry Steingold, oh, hi. I think planning should be congratulated on trying to build consistency so that when somebody looks at something, they can plan their life and that things won't really change that much. And the fact that you've given blessing for outdoor dining here is a great thing. Is there, but there's also an alternative here to get to yes. You can be cooperative and take out the part about where he has to knock down the facility and make it subject to a meeting so that he can design it or you can design it so it becomes more acceptable. And then he can stay there and then he can go to building and get the blessing, or maybe they'll tell him to pour concrete. I don't know. But to get it out of here so that he can move forward with the facility that you've given the blessing on, you just don't think it's sympa, simpatico with the present structure? So am I guessing that, right. So if he puts some plywood on it, he dresses it up, he makes it look like Little Italy, whatever. As long as it's, it works, then it gets satisfied. But that's what I would suggest. Take it out, give him the blessing, don't have to tear it down, let him go to building, let him sit down with you guys, make a deal and get to yes. Because he's spending money. We want money to be spent here. We want him to generate more sales taxes. And I like this vote.
Thank you, sir. Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing and come back to deliberations. Go for it.
I mean, I, I think we should look at condition two. And similar to what we did with the prior applicant and have the applicant work with staff regarding the, the roof and see if we can reach some sort of compromise there.
But the final decision would be up to staff to approve it?
I think it would be up to building.
I, it's got to be, it's got to be up to building and safety.
Yeah.
That, that the structure, whatever remains, be up to code.
The staff has a different concern, which is the aesthetic aspect of it.
I agree. That's something that we need to decide also.
Well, I, yeah.
We want to do something with that.
I think it's separate than the outdoor seating. I think you could have outdoor seating, but this doesn't necessarily have to be a condition of that outdoor seating.
I agree. I was ready to approve this when I read through the, the staff report. I would like to see him get the extra seating outside. Sounds like he's got to go to the building inspector and get it up to code, no problem. My concern is giving staff the authority to say, no, I don't like it aesthetically, tear it down.
That's, that's more of a commission decision.
So, okay. We have to decide whether it's aesthetically simpatico with that building.
I believe that is something that we have to do, yes.
So it seemed like they'd need to come back with something because none of us went over there looking.
I didn't, yeah.
I didn't even think about it.
I didn't look at that. I mean, I saw a lot of trees.
You did, but.
I did, I know.
You thought it was appropriate?
Go ahead, Jamie.
It would be my observation that these plans do not include. observation that these plans do not include elevations.
They do not.
They're in plan only, and yet the issue we're talking about here is something that could only be observed if you had.
Only with the south elevation.
Yeah, elevation, it would actually be south and, yeah, the south elevation.
The south elevation.
So, uh, and actually, as I say, I was surprised because after reading this, I thought that roof must be horrible. I hadn't noticed it before when I had been there. Uh, and I, I had a feeling that it was, it was a prefab structure, but I thought it was pretty good. And, uh, um, anyway, so I just, uh, I hate, I hate to chase somebody away over something that is, um, you know, a, an aesthetic thing which, uh, well, is arguable. So, I like to say, I'd like to see you come back to us if that's okay with the applicant and an elevation drawing and discussions with staff. And see if staff and the applicant can't get to yes on a, uh, on a drawing.
Well, there's, yeah, there's two parts of staff that we're talking about.
Subject to building and safety agreeing that whatever is being built goes, meets code.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I think meeting code, since this is a new structure.
Yeah, it's sine qua non, I mean, that, that's.
That, that has to be done.
Sure.
Uh, if it, if it stays. And I, my personal feeling is the restaurant and the business look better with covers on that patio than without. I, I walked by and I was not, I was not offended by the wooden structure, the, the five wooden structures laid side by side or by the five metal roofs laid side by side. But I think it would be helpful to see what it looks like in a south elevation. And I agree with you, it's got to pass building and safety or it can't stay.
Then we, then we have something we can discuss. And, and we, and, and the director can say to us, well, here's the problem. You know, the roof line is a, you know, is an Asian roof line. You look at the building, it's, it's a mission structure and whatever.
It's craftsman style and it's got metal roof next to it.
So, you know.
Well, let's, let's bring the applicant back up for a moment, if you would, sir. If we ask you to come back in two weeks with a south elevation illustration, can you do that?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay.
Discuss it with the staff where they can make a recommendation.
We have, we have two pieces of staff that we're talking about here.
I'm talking about our planning staff.
Well, the planning staff has, has raised objections to the, to the architectural style and compatibility with the existing building, which would be made clear to all of us if we had a south elevation illustration.
You know, I agree with the review about, you know, the, the visual part of it. I know it's aesthetically, the gazebo, it's the deck by itself matches, blends in with the building. I know those gazebo, they are not really a match. So it's still for me a temporary things. That's why I'm, I'm not saying I want to keep them forever. I'm happy to take them down and build a new structure that will match the building. That requires time, planning and money, of course. That's the reason why. I'm only asking if it's possible to just have an extension of my temporary permit to keep everything as it is. Meanwhile, I'm working with, with the city, the building and safety. Once I have their word, I know what needs to be done, then I will submit those plans that we have the official plans from the architect with the new project.
Okay, well, it, it, it seems to me, sir, that it's mandatory that building and safety rule on the structures that are there.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And then I think it's up to the commission to decide on, on the exterior appearance.
Well, it sounds like he wants to take these temporary structures down.
Eventually.
He said temporary, I don't know what temporary means.
It's, it's a matter of if I do it tomorrow, if you guys, if, okay, if the commission says you have to remove them, I'll go tomorrow morning, I'll remove them all. Okay, it's fine, then I will do that. Uh, but then if building and safety comes and he said, oh, you're okay, in a way, you know, I honestly, I don't know, it's still all up in the air for me. I know that it's going to require me to spend more time and money without knowing what's going to happen the next month.
I don't think anyone wants you to do that, sir.
No, if you say that you recommend to remove them because I understand why and I agree with, with Lucas, I will take them down. It's matter when I have to take them down. If I can wait a few more month and then have a final, final words from, uh, you know, building and safety and from your commission. But, you know, that, I mean, I just so hear what you have to say and I'll follow through. So if you say take them down, I will take them down, it's not a big deal.
So question, Lucas, uh, on condition two, can we make that extension instead of no later than 30 days? Like no later than 90 days or can we extend that?
What, what's, what's a reasonable time to get building and safety to rule on the structure?
Uh, it's probably 30 days or less.
So, but he wants to potentially also come up with a plan to replace it.
And, well, and get some use out of the current investment.
So if we did it for like 90 days, would he have time to actually come with a plan?
If it's 30 days for the building and safety to come up with a, you know, a decision, I'll, I'm happy to just take 30 days extra.
Building and safety is likely to say things like, you have to add the structural elements, I'm guessing, or.
Reinforcements, something like that.
Reinforce the structure in some way to.
That would give me time to talk to the property owner and, you know, try to work together to have, you know, at least we can, at least I know what's the next step. Right now, to be honest, I don't know. I did have the plan drawn by an architect.
None of us are sure either at the moment, that's why we're fumbling with this.
Yeah, so I, let me just interject here. I, I know that, or at least I think, you've been working with an architect on finding a permanent solution. We've seen plans preliminary for that, right?
My architect, yeah, those are, and then I asked to, I think I asked Sherry, Sherry to remove them from this planning, uh, this commission.
Right.
Because, as I said, it's just a plan B.
Right, it's a plan B. But I think we can, if we can further explore that, because that's actually a design that I think staff can get behind versus what's there currently as a temporary, um, cover.
So if they got 90 days temporary extension, you could.
What's there currently, while we work through.
While you work through coming up with a, with a new plan that would be permanent, so they would have more time to use it as it is.
That's probably more appropriate.
How does that sound?
Before, if, if we're going to do that, then I suggest that we continue this case to a date certain so that the city doesn't have to go back and notice people about it and the applicant doesn't have to pay a new application fee. But if we set out three months and we come back and it's possible that if we're looking at plan B at that point, that the commission could say, you know, if building and safety says the structure is, is okay or it needs minor adjustments to meet code, then we look at the aesthetics of it and we look at plan B and three months from now, make a decision on what to do.
That's a reasonable time.
Would that work for everybody? So three months from now would be November, no?
Hmm, October.
No, uh, yes, first meeting in October, which is, pardon me?
No, it'd be the first meeting in November.
Okay.
First meeting in November.
Right.
Oh, you're right, three months, three months, first meeting.
November 2nd.
November 2nd, okay.
In the, in the meantime.
Everything stays as is in the meantime.
Everything stays as is, he can continue using it as is while we work through, um, potential alternatives that you would also need to be talking to the property owner as well, correct?
I will do that right away anyway.
Okay.
She has the plan already, but she asked me to see if I can work something out with the city to find the solution, easier solution. That's, that's why, you know, it's all.
I think what we're coming to, sir, is that the commission is going to recommend that you work it out with the city and then we'll take a look at the final result.
Okay.
We do may, need to make some changes. Well, I guess we don't need to make any changes.
Temporary.
To the conditions right now, we're just going to say, hold where it is until the first, first meeting in November. But while we're at it, I'd like to make a couple of suggestions.
Okay.
In condition one, it says adjacent to the street side, I think it should say adjacent to the El Paso Road side because there is another street side on this property.
Yeah, Rincon, Rincon is the main entrance.
Yeah, Rincon, Rincon is actually where you go onto the porch.
It's where the neighbors are. It's the only place where there's adjacent, uh, property.
That's how you get inside the building, yeah. Okay, and second then, it's really condition two that we're going to be looking at. My, my personal preference is that, that we not require removal of the existing temporary wooden structure unless it cannot be brought up to code.
But we're not.
But we're not going to change two.
We're not doing anything right now anyway.
So, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I just had one little tweak on number 10 to cross, cross off no amplified music permitted associated with.
Like we did on the other one.
Like we did on the last one, for consistency.
I have one speaker.
You have one speaker, okay. Well, just stay within the code and the sound.
We'll say, stay within the noise standards of the code.
Some of my neighbors who come to come, you know, so nobody show that, that means nobody will have anything to say. Plus that side face the Cloud Vista Park. So there is no residency, residence in front of the, of the porch.
Play a little verdi or something, yeah.
Yeah, as long as you stay within the sound code, you're fine.
But we're not actually doing any of these provisions now. We're going to have to come back and resist them all.
This is suggestions to staff.
For consistency.
For when we come back. And, and I agree with, with staff that we should add the condition two from the other case.
Yeah.
To this set of conditions and let staff work out where to put it.
So meanwhile, 90 days, we just have to wait for building and safety to give us a decision, then I'll have time to work out with the staff.
That's going to save you applicant.
Best solution for them.
On this amplification issue, it appears to be a piece of boilerplate that staff is using. And can we get you to not use it anymore and just refer to code?
Just comply with the noise standards and stop.
Yeah.
This, this is similar to some other boilerplate that we've worked through over the years. And I think this is one, after hearing it a couple of different times, we'll make sure that that's just removed.
Great.
Cool.
Great. And, um, so can we have a motion to continue this case to November 2nd with direction to staff to work with the applicant and, and building and safety to establish what needs to be done with the structure to make sure it complies with code or that it is removed if it cannot be made to comply with the code.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
What's more than the code though, because we're talking about.
Well, we're going to look at, we're going to look at, at the architectural elements when it comes back.
Okay.
So.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Trent's motion?
Yep.
All right, any discussion? Sherry, would you, uh, call a roll then?
Quilci?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Um, and that is, what's the name of the architect?
Penn, Penn Shoe, uh, I think it's a Penn Architectural.
Yeah, didn't, didn't see it on the drawings.
It was not on the drawings.
No, that's why these, those drawing, I, those one that I made during the TUP, the temporary use permit. Uh, we submitted, I submitted the plans with, uh, the staff, uh, but I asked to remove them from this meeting. Just I didn't want to confuse anyone.
It's a local licensed architect.
When, when you, when you come back.
Yeah, it's a license, it's from Ventura, a local licensed.
Back in three months, we'd like to see a south elevation.
Yes. Well, we're going to use those plans anyway, pretty much.
And work with staff otherwise.
The goal is to finish the, the project on the official plans that we have, but as I said, as long as the property owner agree with it, we'll, we can definitely do it, so.
Okay. And until November 2nd, everything's on hold, but you need to work with both building and safety and the planning staff, okay?
Bunch of, bunch of food.
Excellent, excellent, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
The, the business owner can continue using the outdoor patio area as he, as, as is, as we work through this.
All the rules are on hold until November 2nd.
I squeeze 90 days.
Then we'll make some decisions.
Yeah, then, you know, as soon as the building and safety is ready, I'm, you know, we work together with it, so.
And I, and I thank, yeah, and thank you to Mora for.
Thank you very much, have a good evening. Thank you, I can leave, right?
Yes, you're good.
You're done till November 2nd with us.
Thank you.
And thank you to Mora for suggesting adding a standard condition from the other case to this one. That is, that is the right thing to do. Let's be, let's, let's treat all the business owners the same unless their conditions are different. And we do public or private property, those conditions are definitely going to be different. Okay, let's go on to item four, priorities of planning commission and community development department. By the way, that was, it was interesting last night, the workshop that we had. I think it was, it was pretty much review for, for at least Jamie and myself, because we've been here a while. I think it was probably new for Judy and, or for Jeffrey because the, the decisions that we talked about in land use and transportation or circulation and such, um, came before they joined the commission. So I think that was a good learning experience. John, you were here when we talked about North Montgomery.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
But is there more that you want to talk about in item four tonight?
That would be the one that I wanted to talk about. That's the one, I think it's unpacking that as well, there was a lot.
That feels like a case that is going to come up sooner or later here.
Yeah, you know, we're turning the corner with this general plan update, especially having that, this last workshop last night. Now granted, there's going to be a 14 day period where we're going to be really kind of throwing it out to the public, asking for them to, to watch the video, comment, provide their feedback. I think in total, online and in person, I think we had maybe shorter 40 people, which is a little bit less than what we were hoping to have. I know during the online visioning, um, workshop that we had back in March of 2021, there were over 100 people at one point, um, that were checking in, providing information, comments. Even afterwards, we were forwarding information, um, onto the consultant. So it was north of, I think in total, we probably had over 200, 250 comments that came in on that one. I think that's what we're shooting for again, and I think we can certainly achieve that. It's just a matter of, once we have the video out, then we start blasting it to, to the other groups and start getting those comments and.
I was informed that there was a, a, a big, uh, event in Libby Park, something about Take Back the Night, one of these things that there were like several hundred families out there. It's, uh, it's like a regular.
You could get several hundred families into Libby Park.
Whatever, there was like several hundred people, uh, that I was told.
We're always going to be competing with some sort of an event.
It was, uh, you know, with the police and, uh, it used to be called Take Back the Night or something like that, and I don't know what it's called today.
Right, and we'd even pushed the initial, um, uh, workshop back almost a week, knowing that there were other events that were competing with it. So it's, it's just, it is tough. You look at the calendars and you have conversations and you assume that there's no issues and then it pops up, you know, a couple of weeks before. But that doesn't necessarily mean, the individuals that showed up and were present, we certainly got a lot of really good feedback. And that's not to say that it ends there, we've still got some, some work to do over the next couple of weeks.
The voting that would have taken place once somebody scanned all the completed worksheets, has, has that process happened?
Yeah, so the.
You wanted to talk about North Montgomery Street, I was wondering what, if there was a consensus last night on commercial versus VMU on North Montgomery.
I don't think there's a consensus yet. Uh, I think you'll, you'll probably see that in the coming weeks, um, as we get kind of some final results just on that, on that piece. And that's just a piece to that puzzle, um, hearing from the community on that, um, kind of that Mentimeter voting, um, platform, so. Uh, we were looking for preliminary results, just kind of raw data last night, um, for today, but the consultants have been traveling back, um, up north and, and flights aren't necessarily, uh.
Where, where are they located?
They're up in the Bay Area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
So we shouldn't expect results this quickly?
Yeah, and even though they're in the Bay Area, they've done other general plan updates down here. I think it was Ventura County or the City of Ventura's general plan update that they did recently, so. They're familiar with this area and Ron, that you heard from last night, he worked down here and lived down here for a while, so he's very familiar with this area.
Did they do the Ojai plan for the county?
Yeah, I, I believe they were a part of.
Ojai area plan.
I think they were a part of that, yeah.
They were, okay, cool, awesome, good.
So you said you wanted to talk about North Montgomery Street? So you said you wanted to talk about North Montgomery Street?
I did? No, 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 I don't want to talk about North Montgomery Street.
You wanted to talk about last night?
Last night, yes. I just wanted to give kind of an overview of it, because it really does fall within the priorities. This is really, if you're looking at all the priorities, I know they don't have numbers assigned to them, but if you were to put a number that was assigned to any of these, this one certainly is the top in terms of how we're addressing it. Because it's ongoing, I'm, I'm having weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings with the consultant to continue moving this forward. And last night's was a big push forward, certainly.
Well, with, with the small numbers of, of, uh, of people reacting to the questions, the statistics become harder.
Yep.
If you have large numbers, then it, it may sort itself out.
Can I ask a question?
I could see we were gonna, we were gonna be getting a lot of questions and a lot of, what, uh, secret ballot type answers, at least until the consultants are able to compile all the answers.
Yep, take that raw data and put it into some final numbers for us.
So, quick question, was the, uh, I know we're looking at the parking study program as well. Do we think that'll be available before the general plan is completed? Because it'd be great to have that data.
You're asking me if I have a crystal ball?
It would just be nice to have that data as we're planning, doing the general plan.
Here's, here's what I think, uh, here's my thought process with the parking study program is the city council has created an ad hoc committee, and that ad hoc committee has been, um, meeting sporadically to come up with some sort of a, um, a process or plan or some, something, something more than what's, what's going on right now. With that, I would pause with this commission, um, not necessarily stepping on toes, but I know, I know that the, the council directed through these priorities for the commission to tackle it. But knowing now that there's an ad hoc and they're working through stuff, I would pause it until we hear back from.
Same, same as with Formula Business, when it comes back to us, it's gonna come back with the answer.
Cool, all right.
Wait, Formula, you're, are you saying, for, hold on, Formula Business is certainly coming back to this body, and we're, I'm, I'm working currently with, just to give this body an update, we're currently working with, um, the business community to, to set up a meeting to meet with them. So that'll be, that's gonna be sooner than later. We're not holding off on that. But yes, coming back to this body with some sort of a recommendation, yes.
One other thing I noticed that is not on this list anymore, that I think was at one point, was the cannabis industry.
Yeah, I took that off for right now.
Is that, is that because it's not gonna come back to us again?
I'm not.
Has city council decided they know what the answer is and they're gonna change the rules?
So there's two reasons why I took it off. One is this body made a recommendation, and that recommendation went forward to, um.
Right.
City Council. And City Council right now is figuring it out. Until council says, okay, let's bring this back to Planning Commission for X, Y, and Z reasons, that's the second reason why it's not on here. That hasn't happened. Formula Business, it came, it's, it's been asked to come back to this body and for staff to work with the community.
And, and define things like digital marketing and common ownership or.
This body has asked for that recommend, for that recommendation and a clear, yeah, a clear definition. I look forward to providing that. Or at least attempting to provide it.
Okay.
Work through it.
I have a question, uh, that I asked at the meeting, but the, the gentleman couldn't answer it.
Who, Ron?
Yeah.
I will answer it.
Okay.
Hopefully.
I have done, I've worked with a lot of SWOT analysis, and when you do a SWOT analysis, you have a just summary, whether you put it in quadrants or just have separate pages, where you list your strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities and your threats. It makes it a very valuable tool for citizens to be able to look at it. This one, you have no idea, because it's just listing all of the various, uh, fact, you know, facts of the, of the town. So he told me that there was such a thing, but I couldn't find it.
He was saying it was in the beginning. I think he was saying it was in the beginning. Is it not in the beginning?
No, there's nothing there. So we paid him to do one. Don't you think they should have to disaggregate that and actually have a, a SWOT summary?
Well, I'll pause only because I need to look at it again. I haven't looked at it in almost two years.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll look at it again and see if I can discern and respond offline to you.
Yeah, because I thought, well, maybe I just need to go through it and make my own SWOT analysis out of these facts, but I didn't see where they, they had actually done that.
It appeared to have been something promised.
Yes, and they didn't provide it, in my opinion.
Yeah. So let me take another look at it and I'll talk to you offline.
All right. Anything more on item four? Then looks, look at item five, future agenda items. Have the lot line adjustment back. Are, are we in a position now to say whether the proposed new lot line at two fourteen Bryant runs through the middle of an underground tank?
I can't respond to that, but here's what I can say, is that we are working on, on responding to the questions that were brought forward by the community as well as the questions that were brought forward by, um, the commission. This item will be coming back on August seventeenth. I can't promise that they're all gonna be responded to, but I think we want to provide an update in terms of where we're at with it. I think that's at least something we can do, because I know there's, there's answers to some of these, but some of these other points, we're still working through. It's, it's not as easy as you would think to, to, to get some of these answers. I know I've been working with staff on this offline.
Makes sense to come back with part of it and.
I think it's, I think it would be helpful for this, for this body and probably for the community here, updates on where we're at in certain pieces.
Is it more of a discussion item then?
Probably more of a discussion item at that point.
So, as, as a discussion item, does it need to be continued again? Or do we make it a public hearing item and officially continue it again? I just want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, I don't want to get into too much in the weeds, to be, to be fair. Only because once, once you see the staff report come out and you see the progress on it, I think that's, at that point, staff would be making a recommendation in terms of how to address it moving forward.
So we wouldn't have a public hearing this next time?
It's already a public hearing because it's been continued. Now.
Anybody can come and continue to speak on it.
So if it comes back, it's still a public, it's a continued public hearing?
Continued public hearing, exactly.
Okay, not a discussion item?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
You could, you could treat it like a discussion item. I think that's what Commissioner Trent was getting at, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we may make a decision, we may not.
Doesn't sound like they're gonna have all the facts to make a decision.
I question, I, you don't want to get into the weeds.
No, no, we don't, we don't want to get into the weeds. Okay, second, second one is the Gables twenty-one unit senior housing. Do you feel that's gonna be ready to go in two weeks? Uh, we, we have one commissioner who will have to recuse herself.
Right, it's like fifty, it's fifty fifty right now.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Because there's some, there are some serious questions that I still have that have yet to be answered.
Okay.
Of course, this should have been one too.
And if not, then it could slip to September or later, who knows? Depends on how tough the questions are.
Right, if I can't get these questions answered, I don't want to bring a half-baked. It's a concept review regardless, but there is a lot to unpack with, and I want to make sure that this body understands where they're going with it.
That is a CR, okay, true.
Yeah.
It seems to me we've, it seems to me we have seen a site plan.
Oh, yeah.
On that once before.
It came before this body.
As, as a CR.
And I understood it a certain way, and then the chips were changed on me at the eleventh hour.
It changed it.
Uh.
Yeah.
And so then they would.
State law and financing and all that kind of, who knows? But, all right, so it's gonna come back as a CR again?
Yes.
Okay.
Concept review, okay.
Concept review.
Yeah.
So no, and just for the full body to understand, concept review, no decision, comments provided by the commission.
Right. Questions and feedback.
Similar to, yeah, same thing as the bowling alley.
And they are public hearings too.
It's not a public hearing.
Not a, not a public hearing. I think it's important that I, that we identify that it is not a public hearing with concept reviews. Instead, what we do is we provide notification to those residents and business, businesses or whatever have you.
They can all come and speak.
Absolutely. And, and certainly encouraged. That's their opportunity, early on in the stages.
Terrific.
Yep.
Anything else on future agenda items? So we'll have one for sure and maybe another in two weeks.
Yeah, and I know, I know there's nothing on September seventh, but I can tell you right now, there's two or three things that we're looking at for that meeting.
A lot of pending stuff down here.
There is, but I can tell you some of those pending ones are gonna remain pending for a while.
Okay.
Can you tell us about the dynamics of what happens in an economic slowdown to the work of this commission?
Are you saying, would there be less work if project, if, if the economic slowdown or downturn happens?
It will, somebody.
You can probably look no, no further than two thousand and eight during the housing recession, where you saw pretty much every city having a lot less projects, um, current. These are current projects, obviously, that have specific timelines and dates in which we've got a.
We'll still have, we'll still have consideration of general plan update topics.
Right.
But I'm not sure that there'll be anything.
Yeah.
You know those craftsmen's apartments that were approved in twenty fourteen and they were actually opened on twenty nineteen? There are five of them. They were actually.
Pearl and Full.
Yeah, they were actually, I was looking back on some minutes and stuff. They were actually approved originally for eight in two thousand and five. No, seven, two thousand and seven, but the recession hit and they were never built, so they came back seven years later as a new, uh, a new project. So that's the kind of thing that can happen.
There's one, one other project along Pearl Street there that, that the commission did approve three or four years ago now, something like that, six oh one Pearl?
Uh, that was two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand. No, I was here. I've only been here six years.
You were here for it.
Not six oh.
Six oh one Pearl?
No, this is, this is the development of nine small homes.
That's six oh one Pearl?
At the intersection of Burr, of Pearl and Bald.
Pearl and Bald, at the corner?
The corner there, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's currently under construction.
That's, that's currently under construction. I've seen grading out there at least.
Yes.
If, if the, um, recession hits and work dries up, we could go to work on Title Ten. I mean, chapter.
There is plenty of advanced planning work to be done. Advanced planning meaning the Title Ten, the parking, any of those other pieces that influence and kind of speak to code, um, Title Ten, I mean, there is a lot to unpack with that, for sure.
Get the general plan done while that's.
While we're, yeah, while current planning stuff would slow down, advanced planning is, I, that's, that's recession proof to a certain degree.
Right.
So.
But we don't know there's gonna be a recession.
Yeah, but I'm just saying hypothetically.
We don't know, except, except the economy has shrunk for two quarters in a row.
That's true. There's debate about the economy.
In a very unique way, though.
Okay. Um, anything else from the director?
That's it.
Regale us. Okay, and commission member reports? Anybody have anything of interest? Great. Um, city council liaison, I guess, is not here tonight. I'm not.
Yeah, I'd, I'd report that, uh, I think it's Mayor Stix. She, she had identified to me earlier today she wouldn't be available tonight.
Very good. Then, in the absence of any other business at eight twenty-four, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.